I'd like to call the order of the Charter Township of Oxford Planning Commission Regular Meeting, scheduled for Thursday, December 13th, 2018. If you please rise and pay respects to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May we note the roll?
Noted.
Item four, approval of the agenda.
I move that we approve the agenda.
Support.
It's been moved and supported, any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes. Approval of the minutes, item five.
I move that we approve the minutes dated September 13th, 2018.
Support.
It's been moved and supported, is there any discussion on the motion?
Yep.
Kelly?
Sadly, and I do hate doing this, but it's rather important. We did have a public hearing, that was a public hearing that we had, and on page two is a one paragraph summary of supposedly what (7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12) people said, and it's not accurate. It's, you know, a public hearing is supposed to be a public hearing, the person that spoke is supposed to have what they said summarized. Each person spoke uniquely, in my opinion, at that, each one covered a slightly different topic, and it's all lumped together, and I think that it's really misleading as minutes go for public hearing. If it was not a public hearing, then something like that might be appropriate, but this was a public hearing, and a public hearing, meaning minutes, are supposed to then go to the township board, and that's all the township board would have for reflection of what each individual said, and you really can't break it down. The other thing is, there was thirty or some people in the audience, none of these numbers add up. How many people actually stood up? It said standing in support, eighteen people, how many of these people? The numbers are all mixed up when you read the paragraph, it doesn't really flow accurately. It says the following individuals supported either verbally or by letter or email, bar standing up, approximately eighteen people. Approximately eighteen people stood up, in addition-
And all those people listed spoke.
Spoke, yeah, and so it's just the way it's worded is just, I would never approve a public hearing set of minutes that grouped what everyone said into one unless they were speaking off one script, or said the exact same thing, or something like that, they didn't. In my opinion, each one was actually very unique in what they said and the perspective they said it from. And then, there's a couple names wrong, as well. We had a sign-up sheet, and really, for something like this, the sign-up sheet should be included in the minutes, too, or at least an indicator that what's attached to the permanent record, in this case it should be any of the letters that were sent in, because if you're looking at this, this is again, the only thing that the township board has to see, it should be indicated whether documents were included in that public hearing, whether it be an email, letters that were sent in and read on the record, and the sign-up sheet for the people that were present, and like, I looked at the names quickly, but second from the last, it's not Alan and Linda Kent. There's a different Kent that was here, but Alan Linda's last name is Piet. So, there's problems with that for me. The other thing is the last part, where we had the lengthy discussion, where there was two nays. There was quite a bit of discussion of why we voted nay, and there's absolutely no indication in the minutes of why we did so, and I think for accuracy point, it's really important to just say, you know, commissioners discussed this, there was concern on this item, that's why it's nay. You know, you look down the road from now, can you tell me right now, why Berger and Rosener Myers voted nay? There's not a mention at all on it. And it doesn't have to be much, just a simple, what was the basic concept? We happen to know it was sidewalks, and there was a lot of unaddressed issues, and it could be summarized in a very simple statement, but that's all the public has to go on, is why'd they vote no?
Any other discussion? I think it's a good idea about that sign-up sheet being attached, too, by the way. Okay, seeing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You know, I'll say aye, it makes feelings, too.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Those abstaining?
I'd like to bring up, can we just include, use this as a, the launch of including the sign-up sheet in the minutes? You're talking about the sign-up sheet that's in the back?
Yeah.
Just a copy of it?
In the minutes, especially when there's a public hearing, and then I would recommend also just listing the other documents that were turned in, so when you're looking at the record, if the township board gets it, they know what other documents were included, if for some reason they weren't included, you would know to look to them.
I think it's some thought to give him about including the sign-up sheet, I don't think that's a great deal. So, I would vote in favor of the minutes today, but maybe next year, next meeting we include those.
Do you want my comments? We've already voted, but, well, I mean, I took extensive notes that evening, and I still have documents in front of me from that, and I tried to write down people's addresses and where they were from, and she's right, I mean, they spoke in detail on some things, and then you don't have a clue, you know, and you don't have any, anything in front of you to, you know, say why maybe something was voted one way or another, went one way or another, in a public hearing, she's right. We had numerous people get up and talk, I mean, I wrote names down and things I said, and it went for quite a while, so, I tend to agree with her.
Why don't we include the DVD or the, or the night's meeting, I mean, that's-
You know, we record everything, I can't maybe even do it with official record.
It's a good idea to have it done with the record, the problem is if the board gets it for their final voting on an ordinance, amendment, or rezoning, they're not going to sit there and watch the whole DVD, they need it summarized.
They need something in writing.
Yeah, especially if at that time, all of a sudden, people come in opposition, and so, having a more detailed record on the public hearing is important.
Yeah, yeah. All right, I think those are good suggestions. The motions three to five, it passes, but I think for next time that's true, we should include that sign-up sheet. And I know there's discussion about, from the clerk, about verbatim minutes, I'm not sure we're going to capture all of that, but I think the suggestion from Mr. Hunwick is a good one, too, with the DVD.
I think for some, some townships, when they have public hearings, have a stenographer, like Edison Township, and they, they do that for public hearings, not for everything, just for public hearings.
Okay, moving on to item six, public hearing, I'm sorry, that's, the word "public" is there, you know, I'm sorry. Item six, public comments on items not scheduled for public hearing or on this agenda. So, any members of the public wishing to address the commission during a public hearing, you can give your name, your address, come up to the lectern. You'll be allowed three minutes to make a comment, and you can make your comments to the chairman, if you please. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chair, I am Bruce Myers, 3100 Delano, Oxford, Michigan. I wrote a letter to the, for the public hearing September 13th, I had requested that my letter be included in the minutes. You can imagine my surprise when I failed to find any legitimate summary of my statement in the draft minutes, and no reference that the letter sent would be included in the permanent file for the public hearing, nor reference to my letter. I was again surprised that there wasn't much at all in the minutes. I've stated many times that the planning commission speaks through the minutes. How do you expect any input from the public, or even public knowledge of the actions of the planning commission, if the minutes don't say anything? Since I couldn't attend the meeting, I was expecting an accurate representation of the statements made at the public hearing, so that I know what each party said. I also would have liked a detailed count of those that stood to be counted as concurring with the speaker, and I would have expected to see a list of the persons present at the meeting, since you have a sign-in sheet, fortunately you're addressing this. We, as the public in horse country slash hunt country slash agriculture country, have requested for a text change to be addressed in the zoning ordinance, this has not happened. You, as the planning commission, had the obligation to follow through with the public hearing, and follow up as you promised. As a result, this should have been included in the agenda for tonight's meeting under 9A, unfinished business, yet it doesn't appear to be on the agenda. You have canceled every PC meeting since September 13th because supposedly there was nothing to do, yet obviously, certainly there was something to do. Are you considering what we have requested as nothing? I can't tell what is happening at the meetings based only on the minutes. I've handed in actual scripts to be included, hasn't happened. My long statements have been reduced to a portion of a sentence, often with a given conclusion that was not what I presented, oftentimes exactly opposite. The minutes as they stand are not accurate, they fail to meet even the most, most basic elements required of a public hearing, and have information that does not make sense regarding the total number of speakers, those present, and who's standing to be counted. This leads to a false and misleading conclusion. Please update the ordinance that we have requested, that the residents of the segment have requested, with the information that we have provided to you. That was very thorough, it was very accurate, it should be addressed. I would also like everything to be more accurate, and when you have a public hearing, there's actually more of an incentive, or a demand, to have the accuracy within the minutes, the minutes must be expanded, which you have was not adequate even for planning commission meeting, let alone a public hearing. Please address this, please address the zoning language difference that we have submitted. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public wishing to speak? Sir?
Good evening, Chumunis, Gardner Road, Oxford. I've been here quite a few times, and I've heard the same story about incomplete minutes, minutes that are not accurate. Who actually takes the minutes in this meeting and then puts it together? I'm asking a question, who does that?
She does it, yes? Yeah, Deanna puts them together.
So why isn't it that Deanna can't do this week after-
She doesn't take them verbatim.
She doesn't what?
Take them verbatim.
Well then, how do we get accurate minutes?
They're fairly accurate, they represent what was stated.
Okay, so if, if this item over here is taking a video, why can't the minutes come off of that and be published and they're accurate?
They could be, but the minutes aren't published verbatim.
Why not? How do we understand what went on if we don't come here? We should be able to hook into something, be it her minutes, or that and they're accurate.
Right, as I understand it, they report on the actions taken by the committee, whichever committee that may be, the township board, planning commission.
So there's no public, actual minutes that are accurate as spoken in this meeting?
DVD.
Pardon?
The DVD.
I don't understand what you're saying.
They're posted to OcTV.
Yeah, so what, you have to go on TV to get it?
Verbatim, yes.
Is that legal? Aren't the, isn't the public able to pick up a, a disc that's accurate, or take the minutes from the meeting?
I don't know if you can pick up the disc.
Yes, you can. You can, you can pick up a disc at the TV station. You can go on the internet and watch the meeting, you don't need the TV.
Okay.
You have to order the disc and pay for it, because it won't be on TV.
Right, so Jim, is there anything else up against the, outside of the minutes?
No, I, I just, I've heard this so many times when I come here, I can't believe you people can't put it together accurate. Everybody that we talked to last night, you weren't here last night, but everybody complains about the minutes. You should have been here, you probably would have learned a lot from what went on. But all I'm telling you is, I know Mike, I hear you, okay? But it just, a township as big as this, with all the committees, and all the taxes that go through this place, and we can't get accurate minutes, from this meeting, from whoever takes them.
Okay, I understand.
It's out of control. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
I also, Jenny Benson, 3270 Barber Road, also wanted to talk about the minutes, last night at the township meeting. Jack Curtis even asked, or was telling someone, someone had asked, "How do we know what's happened in the past at some of these meetings?" And he said, "Oh, you can just find everything in the minutes, you know, you can just look at the minutes," I said to him. I got up, I said, "Have you looked at the minutes? Have you actually seen them? All the people that spoke at this last meeting, and, and everything that they said is compiled in one little paragraph, I mean, you've got the notes in front of you, the minutes in front of you, and it's gibberish. It doesn't say anything like what we were talking about. I mean, it doesn't represent anything that we said, especially for a public hearing, we need to do something better. One meeting, I looked at minutes for that I had gotten up and spoken, and didn't even mention my name, that I hadn't even been here. I mean, it's obvious to some of us that, that our presence and whatever we have to say matters for naught at all up here. I'm starting to wonder why we even bother, because the reaction that we get from people. The other problem I had is that, is that after promising that you would go, you know, talk to the zoning board of appeals, or whatever it is, the ordinance review board, and come back and talk to us about it the next week, nothing. And apparently you just approved the notes, so, before the public meeting, you had already gone to the ordinance review board and figured out what you were going to put in, or the ordinance for our area, and when we came to discuss it, you'd already made up your minds about what was going in there, we had zero input, I mean, I'm trying to figure this out, because of all the people that spoke about it and wanted the changes, and came to this meeting, and we got nada from you. What you did is, you know, I, I mean, I'm guessing it was Bill Dunn that canceled all the next meetings? Why didn't, why did none of the, after promising that the following week, or the following meeting, we would discuss it? Why did we not have any following meetings? And this is the first one, and nothing is on the agenda about it? It just went ahead and passed whatever you decided on before we even spoke, is that, I mean, is that right?
Nothing's passed.
Nothing was changed? The ordinance has not changed?
Not to do.
Nothing has been changed? It, so, so really, it should be unfinished business on here.
It could be, but it's not ready yet. We'll get into that later in the agendas.
You're going to talk about it tonight?
It's listed on the agenda.
Okay. All right.
Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to speak? Okay, seeing none, let's move to commissioners' comments. Mr. Hunwick?
I guess, you know, I've talked to township leadership in the past regarding the minutes, just for informational purposes, and they said what was being done here was in compliance with state and county laws, but I guess the thing that I'm just kind of bewildered about is, we don't control what goes in the minutes. Minutes are done, if there's an issue with how the minutes are done, it's taken up, you're addressing the wrong group of people.
Who should we talk to?
Well, you would have to talk to the township board about how you want the minutes done, I guess. We don't control that, we don't, I don't tell Deanna what to write, neither does Mike or any of the other commissioners tell Deanna what to write, we just-
Is anybody?
Hmm?
Is anyone?
Well, there's a standard, I guess, I, I'm going to go back to my comment, I, there's a standard that is supposed to be set for the minutes. I asked a long time ago if we're meeting those standards, and I was told yes, so, I'm not sure, um-
Who?
Curtis Wright. Oh, yeah, I, but I'm just, I'm not sure, as a, from your perspective, as a group, maybe you should be talking to Curtis Wright, I don't know, but I don't know what we can do about how the minutes are done, when, when I look at the minutes, I guess it's a different perspective. I would rather see a condensed version, it says, Tom Berger voted no. Well, I voted no, I don't care why you voted no, we voted no. I voted yes, I don't care why I voted yes, I voted yes, that's all I want to read. I, if, if people want it more expanded, and if the law requires that, then I get it, you should do it, but I'm not sure if we're doing anything wrong here, from what I was told, but if you're not happy with the minutes, which apparently you're not, I'm not sure we're the group that you need to complain to, but I'm here, I'll listen.
I know this isn't the time.
I have no comment.
But, you realize that if anybody looks at the minutes, it looks like you guys don't do anything. You look kidnapped, you want to look like you're doing something good.
Mr. Barrett?
I have no comments, that's all.
Mr. Nold?
Are we going to have closing comments with the commissioners, or is that on the agenda?
No.
Okay. I've had an opportunity to meet many people in the last, I'll just say, six or seven days, from small businesses to, to a lot of the religious organizations where I've worked in their buildings. We have a new business on M24 that started up in front of the old HL Clay's Progressive Plumbing, it's a design, they ran the front of the building to sell home furnishings in that, it's, I've had people comment on the new business coming into Oxford, they were excited about that, they've been asking me about the clean cars, and that's coming along, it's quite nice to see a change from the, the old Burger King to the clean cars, and then our, our, our Leos that's going in out north, the building, when are we going to see things inside that? And then there's questions about, I've had people say, "What about that sign out front?" So people are watching and looking around. I've met people on the Pollyanna Trail that have been excited about the, the new docks, the, particularly the trash litter pickup, and now we have offered the township snow removals, so this, they can walk on the trails. It's exciting to see out at Seymour Lake, some of the building going right on, right on Drainer, or on Seymour Lake Road, exciting to see that. I've had people come to me, not happy with the amount of traffic that's on Drainer, not the lack of traffic that can flow through the cemetery hill down on Berdick Street. So there's been a lot of people that I've had contact with, and, and listened to what they have to say. And I can, I'm not going to speak for the board, I'll speak for myself, but I'm sure the board would, would join into this. If people within Oxford want to meet for Timbits at Tim Horton's with coffee, I'm sure we'd meet there, we could meet down at Tammy's for sausage and eggs to talk about affairs within the township, and we want to listen, we want to do things, we want to help move things along within the township. And Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Kelly?
Okay, I've got a couple things, a bunch of legislative things going on in the lame duck section, some are pretty alarming in terms of the amount of local control that's getting taken away. There's a series of bills that would take away local control over the siting and selection of large group homes slash institutions, and one of those bills specifically says that if you're on properties of twenty acres or more, they can almost double the amount of residents in the home. I was quite surprised that Oxford didn't have a statement against that, because all the other townships are in opposition to anything that's taking away local control of the siting of these type of facilities, especially since Oxford has such a large number of properties that are twenty acres or more, even within the subdivisions and near the subdivisions and more densely populated areas, we have areas where lots are twenty acres or more interspersed with those, where these can come in without us doing a thing about it. And so, you know, these bills are out there, they're being pushed through, there's going to be a committee meeting on one of them, Southville 6499, next week. The Michigan Township Association has made positions against these, but there's a lot going on out there that's taking away the types of control we need. A lot of it has to do with how well we write our master plan, and how well we write our ordinance on the amount of exemptions that we have on these things, which is why I keep saying, the closer the vision is to what we want, and the closer we make these ordinances, the more chance we have defending ourselves, of defending ourselves against these mandated exemptions, and the siting of these types of things, and, you know, Brandon Township should be a big wake-up call for us, what happened over there. If you're not familiar with it, you should be. So it's quite concerning that a group home for people who have just been released from prison, who have mental health histories that have to be supervised by the Department of Community Health, can go ten to a home, out in the middle of our area of hunk country, and because they have twenty acres or more, you can put ten people out there, where the roads can't handle it, the infrastructure can't handle it, and we're the least apt to be able to actually, you know, monitor those type of activities, so, it's really disappointing what's going on. I know there's a lot of people upset about the lack of progress on the ordinances. We have a lot of open land for sale out in the area, some has sold to good uses and is being put into residential farms, others are still up there, there's a fear that these things are going to sell, and the type of uses that we're still allowing in our agriculture, and ten acre zoning is scary, and it forever changes the community, it forever changes what little land we have left out there, it breaks it apart. One particular development that just came in, it closed itself all off and is now telling people they can't go down a public road easement that's alongside their property. So, that's what happens when incompatible uses come out there, and so that's why you're seeing the public outcry, that for years they've been asking for simple tax amendments, that they don't want to live near compost facilities, that they don't want to live near these type of things, and that you need to tailor the ordinance specifically to create the type of vision that your master plan has promised. It's that important. Without that master plan being followed through by the ordinance, there's, there's no way to, to keep that from being broke apart. When this community today, members of the community went to the township office to say, "Okay, what is it going to take for us to be the applicant?" They tried last night, "We'd like to be the applicant, because it's not getting done." They had three meetings that have been canceled, we had no meetings from the September 13th meeting on. The reason I said no to the agenda is because the agenda doesn't have it on unfinished business. It's still unfinished business. It still should be on the agenda with the report being unfinished business, it's just being carried over to the next one because we don't have work. But the problem is, we did have the work, we provided everything to you. We provided the list of allowed uses and special uses that were appropriate in the area, that were appropriate in other areas in our surrounding districts. You had said that this is on the agenda for later, it's not. What's on the agenda later is a report about what's been accomplished so far, not about this item where the public would be able to speak on it. So to be fair, it should have been on this agenda as unfinished business. But when the public asked the building department what it is for zoning text amendment, to simply have you guys do what you've been doing, have the planner review what we've already given you, we were told that we would have to suck up $6,200. And so, there's going to be a lot more unhappy residents, and all they've asked you to do is finish what you said, and look at the documents they gave you, and evaluate that, and tell us why what they proposed- and tell us why what they proposed isn't correct. That's all you had to do. You didn't have to go off on your own. You didn't have to recreate the wheel. You had to just look at what was already been presented and say yea or nay. That's it. I would like to know who is the new ZVA rep to the Planning Commission?
I don't know.
So it's none of you to, you haven't, none of you have made the commitment so far or been asked to do it?
No, I think we both first, we both have positions, first meeting of the year.
Generally speaking, you would do that at the first, in the first of the year to establish it, yes?
Oh, that's gonna be?
Right.
Okay. The minutes, you guys approved minutes at a public hearing that were inaccurate with typographical errors on names knowingly. Your duty is actually to, to follow your bylaws and follow your rules. And when you're notified that there's actually errors on people's names, your job is to amend the minutes. It's the public records. So forever on, Alan and Linda Kent go get a public meeting. Alan and Linda Kent live at 1524 East Oakwood Road. No, they don't. You have bylaws to work with? The bylaws do tell you the content of the minutes. They tell you what's supposed to be in there. We have an ordinance that says it too. And we also have state law and guidance from the Michigan Attorney General on what should be in there. So there's plenty of sources. And if you look at your ordinance and bylaws, it said that a summary is supposed to be made on the positions people took. You know, the minimum, you know, Berger had comments about this and concerns about this. Rosner had this. That's what's supposed to be in the minutes. So, you know, all along I'm put in the physician where I'm constantly just trying to fight for the good of the community. The public deserves accurate minutes. The public deserves minutes that are not verbatim, but simply detailed enough to understand what the gist of what we talked about in new business for an hour was. There's a big difference between administrative minutes and legislative minutes. We are legislative. The township board's administrative. If, if you actually look at it, it tells you there's a big difference. Legislative minutes have to be much more detailed because we have to justify our actions. We have to justify our actions if we go to court. And if we go to court, we can only defend ourselves, you know, meaning the record. We don't get to use the tape. We don't get to use anything but the minutes. So that's what you're defending yourself with. And, and I think that we should do a better job. And I think it's unfair that, in just trying to make this a better, more accurate word, it's had to be so confrontational because each and every one of you individually, I think, is a fantastic person. And so I am unhappy with the things turned out. I've worked hard to bring details and accuracy to this board. And, um, I'm saddened by how things are classified and the lack of following just simple due process. With that being said, I've enjoyed my time on Planning Commission. I felt like I've made a difference. And I hope that you strive to put yourself in that seat, in the shoes of each and every person that's in that seat and why they're there and what they would expect you to do. I think you have a long way to go on that. But thank you very much for everything and I look forward to seeing everybody in the future.
All right. Thanks, Kelly. Those were kind of my, um, comments for tonight. Twenty-plus years is a long, long time in public service, from the public eye. And I applaud you and your efforts in those years. Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move to, um, item nine on the agenda, new business, approval of the 2019 Planning Commission meeting dates. I'm sorry? Yeah, did I say item? Oh, I'm sorry. Item 10. My, my apologies.
I move we approve the 2019 Planning Commission meeting minute dates as presented.
Yeah, it's been moved and supported. This is a discussion of the motion. I've got one thing up for thought. All the meeting dates are fine with me. The township board moved their meetings up ahead a half hour, which I kinda thought might be a good idea for us as well. Wonder what the rest of you guys think about moving it from 7:00 to 6:30?
Well, I had a hard time adjusting from 7:30 to 7:00. It's hard for working, I, I won't be at these meetings, but I can tell it's hard for working people. And it, keep in mind the traffic in 24 are gonna be shut down. It's hard for people to get here from work.
That's a good point, especially in 1920.
Yeah, I was gonna make comments. I think for each person in the room, it's different. I mean, for myself now, it would be fine, but if I was working any distance away from here and had to go through some of the conditions of what you're stuck with on traffic, it might not be easy to be here at 6:30. Some people work till 6:00 and, you know, an hour to get here is, I mean, they have no break or any time for a snack or to refresh themselves. I'm not opposed myself personally. I just wanna hear what the majority would want.
You know, I'm not opposed of it either, but I was on M-24 coming north at 3:15 this afternoon. And it was all the way down to the Silverdale. So we have two issues, I think. We have the people that are on the board and we have the people that will be coming from different locations where we don't know.
Yeah, I think seven.
Maybe for, maybe the suggestion would be for next year with the, with knowing what we know about M-24 and the different, leave alone.
Okay.
Yeah, I wouldn't mind 6:30, but I think seven o'clock makes sense because of the arguments they're saying.
Yeah, I think you guys are right. So, any other comments? Okay, seeing done those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those of both? Here that motion passed, this meeting date's affirmed. Item B, yearly report from the Ordinance Review Committee. I'm gonna let Lauren start this, but before she actually does, you know, there were some comments made last night and even one made tonight. We have been working on it. It's not that it's in a vacuum or anything and it's not that it's completely ready yet either. Um, we did take this document that was submitted last time. And everybody on this commission thoroughly read through it, digested it, made changes, circled things. Well, I did anyway, for sure. And wanted to make sure this was representative of what we were planning. The next time this came up for discussion at the Planning Commission meeting, this was inculcated in it. It's very important to me that the concerns of this area are, are listened to. The people will come up every week or whatever, every meeting and discuss about what they want and how important it is. It's important to me. I've been out there numerous times. It's something we talk about in the master plan. And I think for me, I'm not talking about anyone else on this commission, but that's an important area. We need to take, uh, stock it and reflect it in what we're working on. And I think that's what's currently happening in the Ordinance Review Committee. And I can be corrected if I'm wrong. And I think everybody else also feels it's important. I just don't wanna rifle something through really quick and make a stumble. So with that said, I would, I'm gonna turn it over to Lauren to kinda go through what we're doing in that area.
Great, thank you. Uh, so yes, I provided a memo, um, kind of of the activities of planning and zoning, um, through the year. I'm gonna focus on the, um, Ordinance Review Committee piece, um, with my comments here. Um, and I started with the most recent, um, events, um, that we've been working on, which is the amendments to the Schedule of Uses, um, specifically the Agriculture District. So just a little bit of history as I put in here. Uh, we started reviewing this district in conjunction with, um, suburban farms one through three in June. Um, and after discussion, um, uh, we found that it was important to focus really the efforts on the Agriculture District first and then carry over into the, um, suburban farms, that information that we got from the Agriculture District because there is some crossover between, between the four districts. So, uh, the planning, or the, pardon me, the ORC, the Ordinance Review Committee and myself met, um, I think we met June, July, and August, three times. Um, actually, that's not accurate because there were a couple of months where we met twice. Uh, multiple times to discuss changes before it was brought to the Planning Commission, which is the typical, um, schedule as it set up the process. The Ordinance Review Committee comes up with the changes, brings it to the Planning Commission with a public hearing. The public has the opportunity to, um, voice their concerns and opinions and ideas. And so after changes from the Ordinance Review Committee, the amendments were brought, uh, which is the September meeting. And after that meeting, the, um, Ordinance Review Committee, we've met again twice. I've met with them twice. Um, we went through in detail the list that was presented at that September meeting or the summary and recommendations that were presented. Um, and there were other, um, concerns of planning commissioners that, um, of other uses that, um, there should've been changes to. So we've met twice. Um, since then, the, the status of the amendment right now is that it's at the, it's with the attorney. And, uh, she and I have talked a number of times about statutes, recommendations, titles, many things, so that we, we get a really accurate representation about what was said that night, what was provided in the recommendation, what the Planning Commission wants, what the Ordinance Review Committee understands that people want. Um, and we're waiting to get back a recommendation from the attorney. So that's currently where we are, um, with that. And a number of changes have been made to it since that September meeting. So that is why it hasn't been presented yet. We're waiting for the attorney comments to make sure that there is, um, full legal, um, support of, of the changes that, that we make. So in addition to that, there was also, we also did an inventory of the, um, neighboring townships to consider the language that they use for some of the similar uses, which you see there. And I, I did put a, uh, a note of, um, to, to pay attention to at the beginning that, um, some of the townships have, like, their just, their definition within the ordinance is very similar to what ours would be, but the title of it is different. Excuse me. Um, so it is, it is important to notice that. Um, there are similar uses. There are also uses that may have similar names but are very different from each other. It's because, of course, they do their ordinance and we do ours. So it's, it's different documents. But that was taken into consideration as well, um, considering what, what the surrounding townships are doing, uh, with that. So that is, um, the status of the Agriculture District, um, coming out of the committee. In addition to that, uh, there have been changes to the Icarage Division ordinance and related codes, um, that are also under attorney review right now. And then the amendments to the Schedule of Uses for Suburban Farms one through three. We, like I said, started that, but then kind of stepped back on that when the Agricultural District became so, um, kind of rose to the top of the list of importance, um, for a number of people. And, um, otherwise, there's, there's some other, uh, the food service definitions that I think we, we talked about in June, kind of restaurants, patios, cafes, and, and how those are defined and how those are protected or, uh, regulated within the ordinance. We discussed back in June. Um, and that was really a, a hot button within the community. A lot, we, I, I received a lot of questions about those, um, regulations and how we, we regulate them. And, and a number of businesses are considering or were considering in the warm months, um, adding those things to their, um, to their businesses. So considering how we regulate that, um, had a flash of importance. But that, as well as some of the other items that are still on the calendar for what we were supposed to look at this year, will be reevaluated and will bring a new schedule, um, out of the committee to the Planning Commission, in probably January for recommendation onto the township board.
Okay, so the Ag District, um, uses. Taken in the public hearing input, the uses that are in Addison and Metamora compared and contrast. Also the commissioner's comments from that night.
Right.
And you've got new stuff at the attorney being
Reviewed.
Help protect for accuracy and legitimacy, correct?
Correct.
That comes back to us, well.
I'd imagine, I mean, she's had it for a while, so I'd imagine it will, you know, come in a couple of weeks, few weeks. I don't know how long it usually takes them to review things.
But it'll be in a form for which Planning Commission can review it.
Can review it, absolutely.
And make a, um, recommendation at the township board.
Yes. It, well, it comes for a planning, for a public hearing again.
That's what I'm saying.
At the Planning Commission, yes.
Comes to the Planning Commission again.
Yes.
Okay. That's what I wanted to get to.
Right. Yeah.
Very good. Members of the ORC, do you have anything else?
You know.
You wanna go ahead, John?
Well, I think for the public, the, the members of the ORC is Ed, Tom, and myself. So, and Lauren is with us. And we sit and we talk about each one of these. And we've had some lively conversations on some of the topics. And, uh, Tom and I have gone at it rather interestingly, from different angles of what, what, how we see things or perceive things. And a lot of the information that we've gotten from the general public, uh, whether it's in written format as, is in front of us or has been spoken to, uh, through conversations, have been, has, we've tried our best to integrate those thoughts into this process.
He rounded it up pretty good, but I mean, literally, we have made a lot more changes. And I, I guess what I wanna point out is, um, I respect what those people talked about and what they wanna try and protect and what they're trying to keep. Because I think it's a great section in the township myself. And so we're trying to say, we wanna represent something that would help do that for them within those ag properties. And it's important to take and eliminate a lot of the things that were permitted uses that we even feel shouldn't be there after people brought it to our attention, that we missed on some of the first go-round.
Correct.
So, you know, that's why we tried to take really good notes from what people presented, or I tried to, and took the, uh, documents that were presented to us back on 9/13 of 18, uh, for the Hunt Country Agricultural District and look at all those. And then I said, okay, what works in the rules of the state from what's been promulgated under their guidelines? And does it work with us? And so that's why right now we have some things at the attorney's office to say, did we write this in accordance with what we can write? Or are we just, because we didn't wanna waste any more time and say, if it's not possible, let's find out. So we think we've done a pretty good job and looked at a lot of the details that were presented to us and tried to eliminate things that we feel would be materially detrimental to their properties in those areas. And so, uh, hopefully, when it comes back to us from the attorney and we present it to you as the Planning Commission and the public, that we've tried to meet some of that criteria. I think it's important to let the public know that. So, um, that's my feelings on it right now. And I haven't even seen what the attorney has made comment to yet, so, uh, you know, I don't know what to say yet. Hopefully, we've done a good job and, and tried to represent people in the right way. And if we miss something, we'll, we'll hear again. We'll look at it again. I'm, I'm not afraid to look at it again and again or whatever it takes to make it work right.
Will we be able to see it before the meeting or is it happening somewhere?
I wouldn't be opposed to that either.
I can see.
What we, yeah, what we review is available prior to a meeting package. Mr. Chair, can I make a quick comment? Sure.
I fully appreciate what you guys are doing and working on this. But remember, uh, you have somebody on the Planning Commission right now. I remember you have somebody on the Planning Commission right now who's got 24 years in that Ag Horse Hunt Country. She's a certified master planner, so she knows what she's doing, she's gotten Planner of the Year award. And I might suggest that you might take some of her input, even when she's no longer a portion of the Planning Committee, take her input because she's researched this tremendously. And a lot of the standards are set by state definitions now, and I appreciate going to the surrounding communities, but if the surrounding communities aren't up to speed, it doesn't mean that we want to match them, we'd like to set the standard that they can match us.
Right.
Carol? I might, there's a coordinated effort going on between the residents, because we span multiple townships, this Hunt Country, in coordinating all of the ordinances so they're all compatible and all have a vision that's similar. And so, each person in that segment was working that segment. And so, we have strides in Addison, we have strides in Metamora, and they're open ears. You know, it's just a lot easier to work within those communities to get some of these changes done because they prioritize it township-wide, not just segment-wise. This, the Planning Commission is supposed to be made up of segments, that's by the law, that's the Michigan Planning Act, it should be made up of the important segments of the community. And it defines segments as agriculture, industrial, commercial, education. And so, we're supposed to represent that, these members. And so, like I keep saying, I represent the agricultural slash Metamora Hunt segment, which is an important segment, it's detailed right in our master plan, but I still fail to figure out what the rest of the Planning Commission segment is. You're lacking the identity, but it's a requirement in law. And so, it's just something you might want to really ask, what segment do I represent? Because you're supposed to do one of them. If you represent education, you're supposed to be keeping current on the capacity of the high schools and the schools, so that when we have development, you know that says, you know, that area goes to that elementary school, that school's at capacity, but this area over here, the school's not. So, it's more appropriate to put the density over here and not here, because I don't want the taxpayers to have to build another school when we have a half-empty one over here or additional busing expenses. That's just one example of why having segments is important. And so, if you represent that segment, that's what you're supposed to do on top of the needs of the whole community. And so, that's, that's part of it, that segment is important to the Planning Commission. And I'm still muddling my mind, why when these were being drafted up, you didn't involve the segment? And I don't expect an answer, but it still boggles my mind because it caused a public hearing and people have to be upset and fill the room and go, "You weren't listening, we've been available." You know, I am available as that segment representative, or members of the leaders of that community would have been there at the table with you in any of those meetings. So, I hope you take that into consideration in future Ordinance Review Committee meetings, that you might want to find out what that ordinance is involving and involve the segment from that, so that you, you know what they want. And the person representing that segment might not be the bus person because you're limited as to how much we can cover, but as the segment person, you'll find the next person to get your info from. It just, it caused a lot of undue delay, and so, I think, moving forward, hopefully, you'll take that into consideration and basically just go right to the horse's mouth.
Okay. Thank you.
What's a horse? He's pretty clever.
Good. Your conclusion, though, Lauren?
Yeah.
So, let's move to item 12 for planner and engineer reports. Anything else? Carla Worman? Pretty clear? Okay. Sharp Engineering is not here, so that leads me to the last item. And before we go, I want to wish everyone in the room and one in the Township very happy holidays. And again, it's been a tough year, and I appreciate everybody's, everybody's service to their community. Thank you. Meetings adjourned, 7:55.